Please rise for invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Put your bow in your heads, Lord, how we thank you for these moments. And, Lord, we ask right now, in the name of Jesus, you would bless us to move forward, to handle the business that is at hand. Blessed is the city of Shreveport, our mayors, and all of the entities there are. We thank you in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands in my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to the regularly scheduled public meeting of the zoning board of appeals of the Shreveport-Caddo Parish Metropolitan Planning Commission. For public hearing agenda items, if you wish to make public comments on an application, we have comment slips at the speaker's stand next to the podium. For future notification purposes, it is very important that you fill out a slip and drop it in the box when you come forward to speak. Please state your full name, mailing address, and zip code before addressing the board. We will call each case on the agenda in order and hear first from the applicant, then those speaking in favor. Ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. We will then hear from those wishing to speak against an application. Again, ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. One representative of the application may then speak in rebuttal if desired. After hearing comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on that case before moving on to the next case on our agenda. Please note that when the board is deliberating, members of the public are not permitted to comment. Any member of the public may request a copy of the board's decisions on a particular case by contacting our office at (318) 673-6480 after 1:00 p.m. tomorrow, or by accessing our website at shreveportcaddompc.com. All ZBA board decisions on cases within the city limits of Shreveport are subject to appeal to district court. All ZBA decisions on parish cases are subject to appeal to the parish commission. Please note that it is your responsibility to contact either district court or the parish administrator's office about their procedures as related to the matter you are concerned with. Copies of this document and the phone numbers to contact the governing bodies are available on the table next to the podium and the entryway to this room. As a courtesy, please remember to turn off cell phones while the ZBA is in session. The zoning board of appeals values your testimony and appreciates your compliance with these guidelines. What do we hear regarding the minutes of December 18th, 2019?
I move that the minutes be received as read.
Motion by Ms. Pearson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Moss to approve as submitted. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. First case on our agenda today is 19-323-BAC. Murphy Carter, 6104 Wind Canton Drive. Is there a representative, Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Yes, please come to the podium.
Yes, sir, my name is Murphy Carter. I reside at 6104 Wind Canton Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71129. And I would like to start off by saying I apologize for being here today. I made a mistake and I'm going to admit that. I did something I wasn't supposed to do without a permit, and I'm going to plead ignorance on it, but I know ignorance is not an excuse. But anyway, just retired and don't have much room around my house to store things because like on each side of our house is like three feet, can't hardly get stuff to the back. And since I retired, I received a boat for my retirement and didn't have anywhere to keep it, had it outside the house, I couldn't keep it there. So what I did was I put it in the garage. And I have a son, he has a car, so I put his car in the garage and I put my vehicles outside. And so one night I was laying in bed and it started raining, it was really bad, and it was hailing. I was worried about my vehicles because, you know, like I said, I'm retired. I don't have any money but anything else, only set income and stuff that I'm on, so I decided I would build a carport to try to protect my investments. And then plus, I have bad knees from working at a power plant for 25, 30 years and have trouble getting in and out of the car sometimes. Being out there in the rain and the weather when it's raining can be pretty sickening to me because I have sinus real bad. Everybody that knows me, my neighbor, I wear a cap all the time because bald head and I stay sick a lot. But anyway, that's the reason I built it, so I would have access to get my groceries and stuff out of the car, bring my mom, my dad, who both have Alheimers, and when they visit, I'll have to get them wet because I don't have any room to put anything else. So I built it and I do plead ignorance for not getting a permit, but if I'm allowed to have it, I would be more than happy to pay any fines, make restitution to anything that I didn't do or anything I oversee, oversaw.
All right, thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Carter from the board?
One more thing.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and also I tried to build it where, you know, it would like bring the value up on my home and wouldn't make my neighborhood look bad because I value my neighborhood.
Ms. Pearson?
Have you thought about storing your boat someplace else, off-site?
Yes, ma'am, I thought about that, but like I said, I'm on a limited income, got five kids, kind of tough to come up with extra money for stuff like that. So what I did was I took one of my vehicles and I sold my vehicle, and that's how I built that.
All right, any further questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else with, excuse me, anyone else wish to speak for case BAC 19-323-BAC? Anyone wish to speak against case 19-323-BAC? What do we hear?
The chair says there is really no hardship or anything for him not complying. And I move that we deny.
Motion by Ms. Pearson to deny.
Second.
Second by Mr. Moss. Further discussion? Please vote. Motion to deny carries unanimously. Case BAC 19-324-BAC. Jeffrey Fobbs, 4702 Erin Lane.
My name is Jeffrey Fobbs, 4702 Erin Lane, Shreveport, 71109. This is my wife Denise.
Thank you, Mr. Fobbs. If she wishes to speak, she'll have to wait till you're through and then give her name and address as you did.
All right.
Please continue.
I'm here for variance, for a privacy fence, for a corner lot in Westwood Park subdivision. I was told that I have a party barge and a barbecue pit and a little utility trailer that's parked in my backyard. And the zoning guy came by and said it was in violation to have it there without a privacy fence. I came down, applied for a permit, well, my wife did, and they said, "We were denied a permit because it's a corner lot." None of this stuff is visible from the front of my house, it's all in the backyard around the next street, rather. But they said, "Since it's a corner lot, we can't have a privacy fence."
Well, I believe you can, it just can't be as close to the sidewalk as your current fence.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, with a chain link fence.
Right. So you can construct it without, with it being in line with what is the side of your home.
Yeah.
And that would run parallel to Westwood Park Drive.
Yeah, and that's what we were trying to get the variance for because if we put it where, they said, that would go right through the middle of the backyard from the side of the house to the...
Right, so it would be behind that portion where you could screen your items, the boat and the barbecue pit and the trailer, and then still have the use of the rest of the side yard between the wood fence and the chain link fence is essentially what it would be.
Yeah, but I would basically have half a backyard is what I'm saying.
You would have the same size yard, it would just be compartmented.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
They're not taking the backyard away from you, they're just...
Yeah, what I'm saying, in the neighborhood, there's two other houses, the house on the exact opposite corner from me, that has the same fence that I applied for a permit for. It's that the house on the opposite corner from me has the wooden fence.
Are you saying at Westwood Park Drive?
The 5L and Erin Lane, both of those houses have the fence that I applied for.
Well, I would have to, we have to check with staff, it's most likely would be a non-conforming fence. But that would be a question for Mr. Jordan, or, I mean, it appears to be, as he says, another corner lot that has a mirror image of the fence that he's applying for. If it was there prior to the ordinance, it's allowed to stay.
No, one of them may have been, but the one that's on the south side of Erin Lane was only put up in August.
On the same, on the opposite corner?
On the opposite corner. And I was, like I say, I've been trying to put mine up since May.
I'm sorry. Yeah, do you know the street address?
Or the street name?
A corner of Erin Lane and 5L, Westwood Park Drive. If you look at the map on the, in our packet, you can see it. It's three houses to the left of his property and then one across the street.
Forty-seven thirteen is the address.
I'm sorry?
Forty-seven thirteen.
Forty-seven thirteen is the one across Erin?
Yeah, that's on the opposite corner from me.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We'll ask the zoning administrator to have his staff to investigate those fences and make a determination.
Right.
Whether they're in violation or illegal.
Yeah, it's possible, it's possible that they are non-conforming, which means that they were in place before the ordinance was enacted or for some other reason we don't have access to at the moment. But regardless, the case before us is your case. And so the variance you need, you can either build a fence in line with the side of your house. If you don't get the variance, that would be the course of action you'll have to take.
Yes. I say it's, I agree to get the fence. When they came by and said, "You need a privacy fence,"
Sure.
I got a copy of the check, I gave the guy a $2,000 down payment back in May.
Right, okay.
But then when they applied for the permit is when the problem started.
Right. All right, any questions for Mr. Fobbs from the board?
Yeah, I have a question.
Mr. Moss?
Mr. Fobbs, are you, without determination, what we actually need to do is to put this fence in the same length of your house right there? And like you were saying, it's going to be compartmented out. Do you have a problem with doing that?
I would just like for it to cover the whole backyard and I would have more room in my backyard. I mean, that's actually behind the fence is what I want to do. Like I say, my neighbors had that fence and I just, I said, "Well, that'd be okay." Whatever I'm doing in the backyard would all be behind the privacy fence. Nobody would be able to see anything.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak for case BAC 19-324?
Denise Fobbs, 4702 Erin Lane, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71109. The house my husband was referred to was forty-seven thirteen, Erin Lane. It was just built in August.
Okay.
On a Saturday, he finished on a Sunday, no permit was given to him.
Okay, Mr. Jordan will check that out.
Okay. And the reason why we're trying to get the privacy fence, we've been there 30-plus years and having any problems, but how they want us to align it from our house to meet our neighbor's house, it would like be half of a backyard. You know, where we got our dog and stuff and our grandkids' toys on one side, it's going to be like too much, enough room to move around.
Right.
That's why we're trying to get the whole.
I understand the predicament, but we're kind of, you know, caught by the fact that it is a corner lot and you have a setback on the side that if you were in the middle of the block, you wouldn't have because you share a property line with someone. But because you are exposed to the street on two sides, corner lots and reverse corner lots have slightly different, you know, offsets and requirements. And that's just the state of the ordinance as it is. Unfortunately, that's where we are.
You said so.
I can't really come back to you, except for in a moment I can come back for, at your rebuttal time. All right, thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Fobbs?
I do, what's the address of the property that you said that recently?
Forty-seven thirteen Erin Lane.
Erin Lane?
Yes, ma'am, E-R-I-N, Lane.
All right, thank you very much.
Yes.
Let me make a comment.
Oh, yes, sir.
Forty-seven thirteen Erin currently has a violation for a fence without a permit.
Yes.
And the other fence on the other corner was up prior before the UBC.
Yes, it's been up, yes.
Yeah, it's been up since '07 at least.
So just to clarify, what that means is that the, your neighbor across Erin who just built their fence, they will be standing where you are soon. Right, they'll get a notice like you got and they will have to go through the process you're going through now. And they'll have to present their case as it may or may not be different from yours. But please know that you are not being singled out for this, you know, as things come to light, that's the mechanism for getting them corrected for the city. All right.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Clark?
Just, and we want to be as sensitive as we possibly can. But when you bring a party barge into a small backyard, it sometimes causes some problems that a barge of that, a barge of that size possibly is better suited in an off-site storage facility other than not in a residential area. And that's part of the problem that you're being confronted with. It's like a wonderful boat, but that's part of the problem that you're being confronted with is that barges and boats of this nature, just at the time that you were cited, were not allowed in this location.
In your backyard?
Yes, unless it could be concealed. This one is going to be difficult to conceal, even if you had got the variance. I don't know how tall this is, but it would be difficult to conceal, shield. I'm looking at a picture here. So, you know, there are some serious problems with complying with the ordinance with the boat of this magnitude is all I'm sharing with you. It may be a lot of citizens that have barges like this will be at a mini warehouse facility where they store these type of boats and so forth. And that might be an alternative that you might choose if this doesn't work out for you. I don't get a vote that the board would make the decision, but I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak for case BAC 19-324-BAC? Anyone wish to speak against case 19-324-BAC? What do we hear?
Motion to deny.
I second.
Motion by Mr. Moss, second, excuse me, second by Ms. Dunn. Please vote. Motion to deny carries unanimously. And the next case is case number 19-325-BAC. I would like to go on the record at this point and say that due to the circumstances that I own property adjoining this property in question, that I will recuse myself from discussion and voting on this case and all other activities that are outside of my duties as chair. So, case BAC 19-325-BAC, Mr. Gary Williams, 650 Prospect Street.
Good afternoon, board members. I'm Gary Williams. I reside at 650 Prospect Street. I have presented a written document outlining my request and rationalizations for zoning appeal for my privacy fence around my property. Basically, in the front of my property is the situation that you're considering this afternoon. The fence I have installed does exceed the stated three-foot height limit for privacy fences in the front of the home. I did not realize when the fence was constructed that there was a height limit for such a fence. I have stated, and I hope you have read, the statement I provided and the information that I presented, both in written and photographic form, supporting my request for the variance in fence height. I basically, you know, stand on the document that I have presented, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding my request for this zoning variance.
Questions from the board?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Have you thought about, since you know, you already recognize you're in violation, have you thought about removing the fence and just putting up a chain link fence or a wrought iron fence?
Well, I do have a certain problem with the suggestion for a chain link fence. I live in a historic neighborhood. I have spent a substantial amount of money in the process of restoring my home to achieving its full historic character. It's a historic bungalow in the Highland Historic, in the Highland neighborhood. And in my opinion, a chain link fence is totally inappropriate for historic properties in a historic nature, in a historic neighborhood with the character homes like mine. Wrought iron is just not a personal preference of mine. I prefer a wooden-type fencing installation, and that's what I had installed. Ms. Pearson?
Ms. Dunn?
Yes, being that on the side of the house and on the back of the property, the fence would still be three feet tall, do you think that'll take care of the problem that you're requesting this fence for?
Pardon me, I didn't quite understand the question, Ms. Dunn.
Along the side, along the left side of the home?
Oh, on the sides, in the front, from the front porch?
Yes, and on the back side.
At my request, and again, I did not realize there was a height limitation at the time I made this request of the fencing contractor. The height of the fence on the sides is no higher than the floor of the front porch. The view of my front porch from the street, from the sidewalk, is impeded because of its current height. But from the sides, both to the east and the west, looking toward my property, both from Line Avenue and Cresswell Avenue, visitors, walkers, neighbors have full view of my front porch. My intention never was seclusion or isolation, it was simply to achieve my own personal artistic interests and personal preferences in terms of installing a level fence that was completely level across the front and did not run with the slope of the land, which I personally feel is appropriate for large-scale properties, but is not appropriate for a very small city lot like mine.
Any further questions from the board members?
In your applications, you stated that you wanted that height at the front to protect, you know...
Ms. Pearson, while the fence was being constructed on Halloween morning, before dawn, I walked outside my home to find my 15-year-old cat mauled to death by a pack of dogs. I found her next to the sidewalk in front of my home. I don't know that the fence as currently constructed would have stopped a pack of dogs, loose dogs, if they really wanted to get into the yard, but I feel that the fence as currently constructed would serve as a limiting factor to protect my pets. My dogs are separate issue. My security fence around the back of my home is constructed to an eight-foot level as a secure area for my three dogs. But the cats, you know, I did let out into the front yard, and unfortunately, I lost a loved member of my family.
Well, I only ask because even though it's that high in the front, on the sides, where they...
Yes, and I recognize a dog could jump the fence at its lowest level, which is approximately three feet where it meets the front of the home. And so I understand that, you know, that may not be a limiting factor, but it may serve as an adequate deterrent for a dog that did not want to jump that height. Not all dogs behave in a manner where they will jump, you know, a fence.
All right, further questions for Mr. Williams? Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak for case BAC 19-325-BAC?
Good afternoon, honorable members of the appeals board. My name is Marshall D. Brooks. I reside at 733 Prospect in Shreveport, Louisiana. I'm a retired electronic technician, I'm 66 years of age. I have a prepared statement I'd like to read, I'm going to try and keep it very close to three minutes, in favor of Mr. Williams's variance that he is requesting. As a concerned senior citizen who lives alone, my personal security and safety is very important to my well-being. My capacity to take a proactive stance to achieve this important goal is my responsibility first. I welcome the opportunity to provide myself with adequate security measures such as the fence that Mr. Williams has put in front of his house. There is a rampant amount of crime that takes place in the 700 block of Prospect. It's been ongoing for a number of years. For example, I was assaulted two years ago in the front of my house on a Sunday morning when a man stuck a 40-millimeter Glock in my stomach demanding my cash money. I had a severely intoxicated driver who ran into my van that I've been restoring that was legally parked in my driveway. It was damaged to such a degree that the insurance company totaled it and the woman, the intoxicated woman fled the scene and was never caught. This is just some of the examples, I could elaborate on and on. My neighbor across the street has been robbed four times in the past 12 years. Criminal activity is rampant, illegal narcotics have been seized in the 700 block of Prospect. So I think that Mr., it's not out of question for Mr. Williams to request the fence that he's requesting strictly as a matter of security. You know, a solid, well-made, secure wooden fence of sufficient height can keep the criminal element from quickly gaining access to my property, Mr. Williams's property, and keep me from potential bodily harm. I have read the codes regarding Mr. Williams's installation and I understand the reasoning and the logic, logical interpretations and the intent the codes were written for and defined. Just allow me to pose to you members one simple... Just allow me to, to pose to you members one simple question, and that's this. When does a legal municipality, when does a local municipality's authority to allow unbridled access of emergency personnel onto my property exceed my right and legal capacity to adequately protect myself from the violent criminal element? Does, I ask myself, do these codes and ordinances bear some degree of culpability that will not allow me to protect myself as a single person, as a single senior citizen who lives alone? I simply pose that question to all of you. Why should my personal safety be compromised by, in my opinion, illogical policies that do nothing to help, help me protect and preserve my personal well-being? Therefore, I ask the members of this board to grant Mr. Williams of 650 Prospect the variance regarding the code violation he is irresponsibly accused of. I ask that variance be granted to him because from a personal standpoint, my personal security is more important to me than having emergency personnel have unfettered access to my property. Because I want to pose this final quote to you, or final point. If emergency personnel have unbridled, unfettered access to my property, so does the criminal element who can willfully come up and cause me bodily harm on my, on my personal property.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you for your time.
Any questions for Mr. Brooks? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak for case BAC 19-325 BAC? Anyone wish to speak against BAC 19-325 BAC? What do we hear?
I make a motion to deny the six-foot fence.
A second.
Motion by Ms. Dunn, second by Ms. Pearson to deny. Do we have discussion? Please vote. Motion carries three to zero, one abstention. Case BAC 19-326 BAC. Sean Gilbo, Gilbo? Pardon my pronunciation, you'll have to correct me.
My name is Sean Gilbo. I'm the property owner at 3640 Greenway Place. We bought, I bought the property under the impression it was zoned correctly to be a multifamily property. Last week, I came before the board and got the special use permit to make it a multifamily property. What I'm trying to do now is just get the zoning variance so we can do the rehab on the back unit. The back unit has fallen to disrepair from the previous owners. We want to clean it up, enhance the property so it looks good in the neighborhood. I'm going to personally live on the property, so I want something that is very nice for myself as well. We're planning to expand the driveway as well to get some of the cars off the street, which is a problem on Greenway Place. So, we're just looking to meet the requirements, do things correctly, and clean up the, the property so it looks really great for the neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? From the board? Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak for case BAC, sorry, case 19-326 BAC? Anyone wish to speak against case 19-326 BAC? All right, what do we hear?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Pearson. Second by Mr. Moss to approve. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Brings us to the end of our public hearing. The old business, committee chair reports. I believe we should have... Were we not due for a slate of officers? Did we do that?
We did that in the last meeting.
Oh. Did I win?
Nope.
Oh, okay. All right, Mr. Clark?
Just real, just real briefly, Mr. Chair, we own... The gentleman said it was sixty-six, I'm sixty-eight and your memory starts to slip away. This week, we did have a, the MPC board retreat. And it was not as well attended as I had hoped that it would be by the board members of both boards, the MPC and the ZBA. But it was attended and it was a very enlightening and very informative presentation by Charles Morone from Strong Towns. And it was giving ideas on what makes Strong Towns and what we need to be doing at this time in our development in order to ensure that Shreveport continues to move in the direction of becoming a very strong town. This is just something that, that we plan to continue to do. I think that a, one of the reasons that additional funds were added into our budget that had been removed from the, by the administration, but was reinstated by the council was to, in order to make sure that we provide as much training and as much detailed training to board members as we possibly can. Because as today, you noticed, you were making decisions that truly impacted the lives of, of citizens and it's very important to, to understand the reasoning and the process that goes into those ordinances being written as they are, that you have no real flexibility in, in making a decision other than in accordance with the ordinance. We just wanted to share that with you, that there will be additional training and hopefully we can coordinate better so that we can coordinate those things with your, your schedules so that you can be a part of these gatherings. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any comments from the board?
Well, I just wanted to say, I did take any, any works out. I caught the tail end and it was very informative and answered some questions that I needed answers to containing tiny houses and what other, and seeing what other cities are doing with those tiny houses in downtown area and of course, and of course residential. So, I think, I think it was very informative and I can't wait for the next one.
It will become, yeah. And do know that, just for the record, as, as I close, that we continue to, to review the, the ordinances that, that we have in place to ensure that they address the needs of the city and the parish the very best that they can. And I noticed some things today that, that we will be discussing, but I just wanted you to know that we're not insensitive to the needs of both the parish and the city. You will hear some things about us, if you have not already heard those things, with the changes that will be made to, to ordinances, possible changes that were made to ordinances, especially in the UDC for outside the city limits of Shreveport. So, you just letting you know that those things are on the horizon. You'll be hearing about them, but you will be properly informed of any changes that, that are made.
All right. Any further business?
It appears that you have public comments. It appears that somebody may have come up.
Yeah, apparently it came up.
Did we have public comments at this time? I believe she's here for a case and it's already been dispensed with.
Do you have what's under there, James?
That's just her name and information.
What's the name?
What's the name?
Melinda Porcell?
Yes.
Ms. Porcell?
Yes. Have I ever missed the, uh, appeal on Mr. Gary Williams' little prospect?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
We are...
This is nature, no, it's forty's fence.
We've already dispensed with, with all of our cases and we're about to adjourn.
Well, Mr. Barry, did he pass?
He did not.
He did not? With the same kind of fence going on in the 700 block behind Robinson's Rescue and Avery House?
That, that fence has been cited as well.
Oh, oh, really?
And any other fences that, that you are aware that are in violation? The zoning enforcement section of the MPC will be more than happy to investigate them and take any actions appropriate.
I thought his fence was an upgrade from the fence that was old and falling down and he was trying to keep with a level line on the hillside.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, that doesn't meet the standards.
I'm sorry to hear that. Okay, well, I was expecting a longer meeting and it takes me a good ten minutes to parallel park, so. Anyway, I did want to voice my support and I'm sorry to hear that decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any further comments? In that case, we adjourn.